Now we'll move on to conduct of business, City Clerk.
Item 6A, adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase and sale agreement for sale of the crossing property and authorizing the city manager and city attorney to execute all documents necessary to close escrow.
Okay, first we'll turn this topic over to the city manager and then followed up by the city attorney. The city manager.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and members of the public. Javon Brogan, city manager. I'm excited to present this item to you tonight with city attorney Mark Safrano. Should the city council approve this item, which is a purchase and sale agreement with the Cardinelli Automotive Group for the crossing site? It will mark the first major milestone in redeveloping this site since the city began conversations with Cardinelli last year. As the SAFR report notes, the sale of this property represents a $3.6 million profit over the initial purchase price in 2012. In addition, the annual projected additional sales tax revenue of more than $1 million a year complements our fiscal sustainability project where we have been looking for a variety of ways to improve the city's finances, not just taxes, not just fees, but really looking comprehensively at economic development, and this is an important part of the overall landscape. And so with that, I will turn the presentation over to our city attorney, Mark Safrano, who will provide a brief presentation on the mechanisms within the purchase and sale agreement. But both Mark Safrano and I will be here to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
City Attorney.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Give me a moment while I bring up the presentation and share my screen. Can everybody see that? All right, we're getting nods, fantastic. All right, so as the city manager indicated in his introduction, we're here this evening to talk about the purchase and sale agreement for the crossing property. So here's a brief agenda, we're going to give you a little bit of background. We're going to review the key provisions of the purchase and sale agreement, we're referring to that as the PSA, and we're going to discuss what the next steps are. So let's go back and look at the background of this, which started well before 2012, but that's where we'll start our presentation tonight, because it's the most germane to what we're doing. So the city purchased that property for about $1.4 million, as the city manager indicated, for development as a hotel. And four years later, the city was able to execute a PSA with a hotel developer for $3.97 million. And it took four years, because during that period of time, the city engaged in all of the actions necessary to entitle the property and do all the sequel work and all of the zoning amendments that are required, it would have been required to develop that property as a hotel, as you can see, quite a time-consuming process. But the city was successful in entering into this purchase and sale agreement. Unfortunately, however, you'll remember that the developer could not close escrow due to delay caused by litigation that the city ultimately prevailed in, so that sale fell through. In 2019, there were some extensive remarketing efforts through the efforts of the city manager and our representative CBRE, and they remarketed the property really on a worldwide basis, and the city received an offer from a hotel developer for $6 million, again, to develop a hotel slightly different than what was proposed by the earlier developer, but nonetheless consistent with all of the zoning and the entitlements. Unfortunately, shortly after the city council meeting, at which the city council approved entering into an exclusive negotiating agreement, the developer pulled out of those negotiations. So we fast forward to 2021, and in the meantime, the state had amended a law called the Surplus Lands Act, and that act requires agencies under certain circumstances to offer land that they have that might be surplus to various other public agencies and for affordable housing developers. So before the city could enter into a proposed purchase and sale agreement with anybody, they had to comply with the act, and the city did comply with the act, and we know that because HCD, which is the state agency that oversees housing development in cities, among other things, reviewed the city's process for compliance with the act, and they determined three things. First, that the city had met all of the requirements under the act, that the city engaged in good faith negotiations with affordable housing developers, which unfortunately did not result in a sale to such developers. But as a result of that, the city is authorized now to dispose of the property, and this has been determined by the HCD in writing, and we have correspondence from them to that effect. So the city then became free to dispose of the property as it sees fit, and the proposal tonight is a purchase and sale agreement with Cardinelli. So here are the key provisions of the purchase and sale agreement. So Cardinelli, the buyer, does intend to construct a Hyundai Genesis auto dealership on the property. And I wish we had a rendering for you, but we don't have a current rendering of what's proposed. There have been a variety of them, and we didn't want to show you a gorgeous picture of something that turns out in the future to be just as gorgeous, but somewhat different. So please excuse us for that, but we should be getting some renderings in the relatively near future. The sale price is $5,600,000, all cash at the close of escrow, as the city manager indicated, and the buyer is going to be applying for all of the required land use entitlements at their sole expense. We'll pause there for a second to remind everyone that the land is not entitled for an auto dealership, it's entitled for a hotel. So Cardinelli has agreed to assume all of the risk in going through that procedure, and there's quite a great many actions that the city is going to need to take in order to entitle the property, so that Cardinelli can eventually close escrow. So I've made a list of those for you, the general plan amendment, specific plan, plan development permit, CUP, architectural review, and sequel clearance. And these will require multiple, likely multiple, planning commission and/or city council meetings in order to review, and if the city council approves. That target date is the end of 2021, and you might note that's not four years, that's actually only a few months. So this is an extremely expedited process that the city is going to do its best to commit to making sure that that target date is met, for we also hope that Cardinelli is very much looking forward to getting their dealership built. We think they're very motivated to do so and do so as quickly as possible, and I'm told that city staff and we will do everything that we can to maximize the opportunities for that to occur, so that that review can be completed by the end of this calendar year. Because the close of escrow is contingent on obtaining those land use entitlements and the city's readiness to issue a building permit. So what that means is not only that the city will have to have approved the land use entitlements before the close of escrow, but also that the city will have to have received from Cardinelli a full set of building plans, gone through the entire plan check process and review, and be ready to issue a building permit. Because the target date for close of escrow is March 31st of next year, that can be extended for up to six months if necessary. Hopefully it won't be necessary, but we built in that little safety valve, because sometimes unexpected things happen. Another piece of good news is the buyer is going to designate the city as point of sale for subcontracts that are in excess of $5 million, so that means the city will see substantial sales tax revenue, and the buyer has agreed to operate a car dealership for a substantial period of time. And the estimated sales tax revenue on an annual basis, once the dealership is up and running, as indicated by the city manager, is approximately $1 million per year. So those are the key provisions of the purchase and sale agreement. The next steps are answer any questions from any of you, to obtain public input, to have discussion back at the city council, and then staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase and sale agreement. So Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, that concludes my staff presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, along with city manager Brogan.
Thank you. If there's members of the public that wanted to speak on this, if you could raise your virtual hand. To the city manager and/or city attorney, just when it comes to this project and construction element of it, is there, have, has it been made clear, at least my belief, I don't know what the councils are, about the union jobs and labor when it comes to this project and the importance that it is to our community?
I think the city manager is coming to the podium to answer that question.
Thank you. City manager?
Sure. Mayor Medina, we have made the developer aware of all the requirements relating to development of this site, as well as the prior history with regard to union lawsuits relating to both the construction, operation, as well as labor to develop the site. We feel that they are fully aware of all of the constraints on the site and going into this project eyes wide open, but is very much intent on moving forward and is actually have expended hundreds of thousands of dollars already to begin design work to develop the dealership, and so we do believe that they are highly committed to this project and have also issued a reimbursement agreement to the city for all the work that we have been doing to begin the entitlement process.
Thank you. Questions from colleagues? Councilmember Mason.
Thank you. I just wanted, I guess, for the public to see, are there any renderings that you can share? I know.
So, yes, councilmember Mason, I really apologize for not being able to do that. We did have some renderings, but they were provided actually last year and are now out of date. There were more recent renderings that did not correctly reflect some of the features that are constraints on the zoning, and we really didn't feel it was appropriate to display those renderings at this time. I think the best way to put it is if you can imagine a thoroughly new, modern, a car dealership with clean architectural lines, modern design, and, you know, nice landscaping around it, I would say in general that's what the rendering would look like if we had a rendering of the project to share at this time.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think, and I know I've said this to city manager Brogan before, but if possible to align the design with the unique kind of framework of that location along the freeway, I think would be more complimentary to that location. Also just wanted to ask, there has been questions around the unique nature of that location and the zoning of the location, and how, you know, this makes this particular deal a little bit more attractive, because it has been difficult to find the right entity or the right developer to come into this location, so I was wondering if you can talk a little bit more about that.
Sure. So at a high level, any reuse of this property will involve a specific plan change and more than likely a general plan change. One of the reasons for this is the prior action to zone the property for the OTO hotel was extremely specific. The property is zoned for a 123-room hotel with a banquet facility of X square feet. That product, we know from our more than five-year effort in the city to try and have that product developed, is not a candidate for this 1.5-acre site. And COVID-19 has essentially meant that any hotel project that we could ever envision is pushed off even in the future. And so any reuse is going to involve a whole host of zoning, as well as specific and likely general plan changes, and that's just by the very nature of how it was entitled very specifically. And so in looking at this reuse, which is an automobile dealership, one of the attractive features of this compared to the hotel is that it provides annual ongoing revenue to support the city, similar to the prior hotel project was estimated to provide approximately $1 million in annual hotel room tax, roughly the same amount of revenue just now in sales tax because of a car dealership.
And how, how do you get that projection? I know in this non-related matter, right, we've had other matters come before us, and we've been told, well, we can't base projections on, you know, other cities or other locations. So how did we get this projected revenue?
Absolutely. So that projected revenue is based on the anticipated size of the dealership, what we know dealerships provide. Individual sales tax data from businesses is confidential, but by state law, members of your staff does have a window into that information. And so we have good data on what car dealerships generate, and based on the representations from Cardinelli, we believe that to be true. Now, that number is an estimate, and one of the reasons why we are not able to show a rendering is depending on the size of dealership that is built and how much parking is available, that will actually factor into how much revenue. And so the developer is currently looking at the ability to go subterranean and put a parking lot underground. More vehicles stored on site will actually increase car sales. And so that number is an estimate. As we refine the design, we will have a better estimate on annual sales tax, but that is a preliminary estimate. We have ground truth that with other dealerships, and we feel very comfortable in that number.
And would, okay, so to my questions. The next one is just in regards to revenue. Can you talk a little bit about the electronic billboard provision in the contract?
Sure. So I'll turn this over to city attorney Mark Safrano for specifics on the language. However, at a high level, one of the things when we began negotiations with Cardinelli was realizing the proximity of this site to the freeway and the possibility for a billboard. And so we had a lot of discussions about that and actually had contract language with regard to potentially looking at a billboard. We were stopped in our tracks because there was a state law implemented not too long ago that prevents billboards within 500 feet of an on-ramp or off-ramp to a major interstate. So what that really means is state law prohibits what we would typically envision of an electronic message board on this site. However, there is potentially the possibility for an electronic message board on the El Camino side, unfortunately, because it has to be lower than the freeway height and not visible from the freeway, it actually would block the front view of the dealership. And so at this point, based on site constraints and state law, we believe that there is not the possibility for an electronic message board on the site. As a belt and suspenders, we have negotiated provisions within the purchase and sale agreement that requires the property owner, Cardinelli Automotive Group, to work with the city should it become legal and should we define a path for an electronic message board to be placed on that site. So that's a high-level overview. Any other specifics on the language, city attorney Mark Safrano, for reference.
And so, but there's a possibility of revenue in the future if there should be a billboard, is really what I'm getting at. Yes, I see. City attorney Mark is nodding his head. Okay, great, thank you. The other question is around Jack's. We were actually just there, and, you know, we always park in this space. That will no longer be space available, and so I saw in the agreement, there's a provision in there wherein the city is going to be, it looks like, responsible for terminating the license or whatever it is that you have with stacks. I don't have it right in front of me, but I read it prior to this meeting. So can we talk about maybe how, is anybody working with Jack's? What is the alternative? Because that location is so odd as it is, parking is always full. What are the, what are some alternatives for Jack's?
We will be working with Jack's Restaurant. You're absolutely right, it is a very successful and popular restaurant in our community that unfortunately does not have enough parking in its existing lot, and so that does present challenges. We were able to leverage the vacancy of this site over the last several years and allow Jack's to lease that. That will be coming to an end and was always envisioned with the redevelopment of the site, and so we will be working with Jack's Restaurant to terminate their temporary occupancy, and there are additional strategies that restaurants can employ, and so we will be working with them on that.
And I apologize to you more, but I do have just one more question, thinking of some past meetings that I attended prior to being on council, and that's around the apartments, the location that's right adjacent to what will likely be this auto dealer, is are there going to be any provisions going into this contract around the alarm, the noise that it makes, or have they even been notified that this might be coming or that this was coming to the council tonight?
So yes, they are aware, they are well aware of the crossings and the 1,000 residential units toward the west. All of those conversations and questions are part of the entitlement package, and those will come forward as the entitlement process and the various zoning and specific plan changes come forward. Absolutely, they're all envisioned and preliminary conversations have been had.
Great. I'll hold in my comments for later.
Vice Mayor Medina. Vice Mayor?
Hold on just a second here. Something going on with my audio, but I'm ready. Those are a lot of good questions, and some of them were similar to mine in that calculation of a million per year. That, that, that's not only car sales, but the car service, the service department that they would have on site. City manager Brogan?
Yes.
Do we have like an estimate on how many jobs that would be generated from this project during construction and during operation?
You know, at this point, we do not, we need to work with the purchaser to further define the actual envelope of the development, but that information will be coming forth.
Right, okay, and to assure the public that we're not going to get a box there, this is a brand-new dealership, the design will go through architectural review, and it'll go through the planning commission, and we have plenty of opportunity for the public to provide input on that. Correct?
Yes.
Excellent. And my last question is, is the risk associated with this project? This has been a problematic site with the long history, and what risk of, are we looking at if this, what could hold this up, the sale up, besides not being able to process the application and get all the entitlements done, but the labor portion? If you can give us a little bit more insight into that. It was briefly touched, but what is the, what is the risk?
So, very good question. Let me answer that in two parts. If you recall, the prior challenges with developing this site were really spearheaded by the hotel workers' union, and so given that it is no longer intended to be used as a hotel, we do not foresee challenges on that front. With regard to construction, those challenges were resolved in all previous hotel project endeavors, be that the OTO site or Black Ridge, and we expect Cardinelli as one of the largest privately-owned automotive dealers to be able to address all of those challenges. This is not a new thing for them. The other way that I will address that is to say, there's an entitlement process that has already begun, and as a regulatory agency, the city and the various entities in the city, both the planning commission staff and the city council, really have chief oversight over that regulatory process, as well as the motivation of the buyer. One of the things that we know is that the buyer is very motivated to open a car dealer, not just to develop this dealership, but they're looking at temporary locations, and so upon tonight's action, they are prepared to enter into leases to open a temporary dealership here in San Bruno. Hyundai and Genesis, Genesis being the flagship of the Hyundai brand, there is not neither a Hyundai or Genesis dealership between Marin and further south in the peninsula, so there's about a 60-mile stretch without a Hyundai dealer. And so they, their last dealership, Hyundai dealership, closed in Como, and they're very interested in opening a dealership in San Bruno and opening a temporary facility where both they can sell cars and repair vehicles. So once their dealership is developed, they can reach that stabilization year. Typically, a stabilization year can be anywhere from three to four years after opening. If they're able to open a temporary dealership, they can reach that stabilization year quicker, and they are committed to do that. I know that representatives from the company flew in on Monday to tour various sites, and that process to identify temporary locations has been going on for quite a few months, and upon tonight's action, they will be ready to put their plans in place, which will also have the benefit to the city of obtaining sales tax from both service and sales in the interim while the dealership is being developed.
Mr. Mayor, if I can have a follow-up question on that?
Oh, absolutely. You have the floor.
Yes, city manager Brogan, so how involved is that process in getting a temporary site, and what would be a time estimate for, a range of time estimates for something like that to occur?
All depends on the site. At this point, not ready to give a number of days, but I will say that they are very committed and have, over the last several months, worked to identify a temporary location and are waiting on execution pending tonight's action.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton, please.
So my colleagues asked nearly all of my questions, and I thought I was going to get a good one in there at the end, because I wanted to mention the efforts to open for temporary, but you covered that as well, because I wanted the public who are listening to hear how, you know, eager Cardinelli is to operate here in San Bruno, which is a great thing. So my only question left is related back to Jack's, and I know we're going to have to terminate the agreement that we have for their parking. Will they be able to continue to use it through the close of escrow? I don't imagine it would be much beyond close of escrow, because I know how eager Cardinelli would be to break ground and get started on construction, but would Jack's be able to use the property up until that time?
Yeah. Those discussions still need to occur, so at this point, not able to provide an answer.
Okay, if you can keep us posted on that, that would be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a lot of my questions were also answered. I was particularly interested in how the revenue projections were done. Back when we were talking about a hotel, it was a lot easier, because we had a pretty straightforward formula with number of rooms, industry average on occupancy, and average, I hope, you know, the cost per room. It was pretty easy to derive a cost, and I think those early calculations drove us to make sure we had a TOT tax coming forward, and we had all that queued up. So it sounds like the estimates here are sound, although not as verifiable, because some of that information is not public, and so... we initially set out to do. And, you know, when the, in the city manager, or the, I'm sorry, the city attorney's presentation, we started talking about, you know, sort of starting the history at 2012, when the city purchased a property. And I was thinking, you know, just, and not to go too far back in the time machine, but, you know, just thinking back 20 years ago, when, when the voters were asked to approve ballot measure to increase the height limits in that area. And part of what was a big selling point was that there would be a hotel there, and it would be a revenue generator. And, and after, you know, two false starts at trying to live up to that commitment, I, I think I can say pretty confidently that we did make a very solid effort to sort of pursue that, that goal. One of the biggest objections to the, to that particular measure was that without a solid commitment to a hotel, that it was just, you know, just talk, and that the city would never follow up. But I do think that we did make a real, a real effort to, to make that a reality. And another thing that was considered to be a, a community amenity of the hotel would be that there would be meeting space. And back then, they didn't foresee that there would be a new recreation and aquatic center that could accommodate some of those things that would have been accommodated in a hotel meeting space. Later iterations of the hotel, they couldn't even accommodate those because of the, the cost prohibition. So, so I just wanted to say that it does look like we, we've come to a good compromise on what we can do with that property. It's not what we initially intended to do. We tried very hard to stay to that original commitment, but this does seem to be a, a good use of the property. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, and for anybody that may have, you know, still had some of those, still remembered some of those early, earlier conversations from two decades ago, and felt that the council had gone in a completely different direction. I just wanted to reassure the public that we are, that we were committed to following that, and that we have come to a, a solution that's as good as we can get, given all of the factors that we've encountered over the past decade. So that was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Well, I think you gave a pretty good historical perspective on, on the lot, you know, and, and the city did purchase it because the city, as was indicated, wanted to maintain the control on the quality of the hotel, not just any motel or hotel, but also the quality and the standard that, that the community had wanted, in addition to the amenity of a meeting facility, so people could rent it out or utilize it. So I think that the council now, the council then, had gone out, as was asked, as for the hotel, gosh knows, post-COVID, I don't know the hotel market as far as having somebody come in and, and going down this path. So I do appreciate that, that historical perspective, and I know the lot that we're referencing next to Jax, you know, if you go into the lot, it actually has a sign for everybody in the complex, not just Jax. Anybody that has there can, can actually park into that lot as well. But I know it is on the city's owner, the city must then engage with the owners of Jax to facilitate that with the, the purchaser. So are there any other questions or comments by my colleagues? Okay, seeing none. This is, and I have asked, and I have not seen any hands raised throughout the time that we were talking, because it would have paused us from the public, but this is again, on conduct of business, it is a resolution. Is there any action by council?
Chair, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion and a second to, to adopt the resolution. So I had asked for public comment. There is a hand up now. So that's why I started it really early, because I know sometimes that happens. So if it is okay with the motioner and the seconder to allow the, the member of the public to speak, and I apologize, because we should be going through the roll call at this point. So, city clerk, there is one person from the public to speak. Could you please let that person in?
Yes, Jeffrey Tong?
City council, I apologize for not putting my hand up earlier. I wasn't clear on when I could speak. But I'm totally against having a, an automobile dealership on El Camino Real, because I believe San Bruno has too much of an auto-centric focus, which is dangerous for pedestrians and bicyclists. In fact, I believe this is inconsistent with San Bruno's bicycle and pedestrian master plan, and this would have a tremendous environmental impact that's detrimental to San Bruno, given that prior to COVID, San Bruno had a tremendous automobile traffic problem, and we have a, a parking problem, and adding more cars to it will exacerbate it. So I'm very fearful of the environmental impact report that's going to be expedited and just glossed over, because this is going to be impacting the entire city. However, I looked up some research, and it looks like Hyundai has, is dealing with micro-mobility devices. If they sell alternative type of vehicles, it may actually improve San Bruno's non-automobile infrastructure. So I would like to keep that option open, or at least have the city council consider that option. But with regards to just selling automobiles, it's going to exacerbate our problems. San Bruno's already adjacent to San Francisco International Airport, and I believe that should be San Bruno's focus on redirecting its economy, finding a market source that addresses dealing with San Francisco International Airport. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate you being here this evening. Okay, city clerk, just so we're on the same page, we had a motion and a second. Did you have who those were, please?
Yes, I have the motion by councilmember Salazar and a second by councilmember Tom Hamilton.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll go on to item B.